I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and the moderator for today's forum. This forum is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Los Altos, Mountain View, and it's being recorded by KMTV. Thank you, KMTV, wherever you are. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit organization of women and men established to promote political responsibility through informed, active participation in government. The League does not support individual political candidates or parties. We do, after careful study, take positions on political issues. We invite anyone who's interested in government, politics, and serving the community to join us. We also encourage you to visit votersedge.org for more voter information. The format for today's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will make a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement. We increased the amount of time from one minute. Next, the candidates will respond to questions from the audience. Because of the large number of candidates and time constraints, not every candidate will be asked to answer every question. Submitted questions should be of general interest. Question sorters, who are League members, will review and select the questions that have been submitted. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question they are asked. Finally, the candidates will have one-and-a-half minutes to make a closing statement. To help keep us on time, we have our timekeeper Natalie here in the front row, and Sue Russell, who will signal each candidate when their time is up. In the interest of time and decorum, the League asks our audience and candidates to abide by the following. The questions to candidates must be written on cards provided by the League. League volunteers are circulating throughout the forum to hand out cards and to collect the questions. Just hold your card up and someone will grab it for you. Please, no audience demonstrations, clapping, cheering during the forum. Please turn off all electronic devices that beep or ring. And we can do that now, if everyone wants to do that now. If any devices are being used to record, we ask that the content be shared in its entirety to ensure that any remarks made are not distorted. To the candidates, there will be no substitutes or stand-ins for the candidates. I will enforce firm time limits. After I say, "Thank you, your time is up," please end your comments. Please do not interrupt each other. Candidates have been given a notepad and a pen to take notes during the forum, but may not use other props. Campaign material -- did you not get -- no tablets? Okay. Do they need tablets and notes?
You're good?
Are you okay? Campaign material cannot be displayed within the forum, so we have -- the candidate materials are on the table just outside the door here. There are some League materials out there, and there are also League materials up here on this table. Now, finally, I'd like to introduce the candidates who are running for Los Altos City Council. The candidates are seated in the order they selected prior to the forum. The first candidate is Lynette Lee Ying. Second candidate is Jeannie Bruins. The third candidate is Nisa Flagler. Next is Alex Glue. And last but not least is Steve Smiley. Welcome and thank you for participating in today's forum. Now, some of you may have noticed that there is a candidate missing here. Jan Pepper could not be with us this evening. In accordance with League guidelines, I will now read a statement written by Ms. Pepper. That's what I'll do now. So here's her statement. "I have loved living here for the last 31 years and serving as your council member for the last four, including your mayor in 2015. For those of you who know me, you know that I'm a good listener and will respectfully listen to everyone who has something to share. The more people who are involved in our community, the better input we receive and the better decisions we make. I initiated and led the adoption of the open government ordinance. This is why you now see the city council agenda published in the town crier a week ahead of time and increased resident participation at council meetings. This ordinance also requires that story poles be installed for new commercial buildings, which provides a huge visual alert of the height and mass of proposed projects, and it encourages public input before decisions are made. I'm proud that I led the effort for Los Altos to join the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Authority, which will allow us to reach the 2020 goal in our climate action plan three years early. Professionally, I am the CEO of Peninsula Clean Energy, a community choice energy provider for San Mateo County. And as a CEO, I know how to manage organizations, set and meet budgets, and deliver results. And that's where I am tonight, at a monthly board meeting for the Peninsula Clean Energy, where I work with council members from the 20 cities in San Mateo County, and where I hear new ideas about what has worked in their cities and what can work here in Los Altos. Many people have told me they appreciate that I ask the hard questions at our council meetings. You can continue to have confidence in me, that I will ask good questions and make sure that we receive the answers and services we deserve. I will continue to promote the qualities of transparency and integrity, qualities that the League of Women Voters supports and which I hold dear from my time as the president of this local League of Women Voters. I understand your concerns and the pulse of this community. I ask that you support me, Jan Pepper, for reelection to the Los Altos City Council, and that you elect other members to the council who are willing to listen to you, work together with me, to achieve results on those issues important to this community. Thank you for listening." And that's the end of the Jan Pepper statement. So now, yay, finally, we're ready to begin. So we're going to have opening statements. We're going to start with Lynette, and you have a minute and a half to give your opening statement.
Hello, I am Lynette Lee Ying. I've been a resident of Los Altos for the past 20 years with my husband Walter and my two sons. Los Altos needs to get things done. Too many essential issues have been discussed, debated, and surveyed with no results. I've demonstrated strong leadership in community and county services, working successfully with diverse groups to achieve defined goals. I will bring that drive to City Hall, so residents can count on me. That's why my motto is "Let's Done." I will focus on public safety. I will work with the law enforcement to reduce burglaries and mail theft. And reinstate the traffic commission to address the three Es: engineering, education, and enforcement. Planning: downtown visioning and community center solutions, both north and south, will define our future for the next 20 to 50 years. We must move forward with all speed and include resident participation at every step. Maintenance: we have nearly $37 million of deferred maintenance on our streets, facilities, and parks. I will allocate funds to move these projects forward. Commissions: I will clearly define commission charters to empower and respect citizen volunteers. Thank you. That was my minute and a half.
Jeannie, it's your turn.
Thank you for the honor and privilege to have served you for four years as city council member and this past year as your mayor. Los Altos has been my home for 29 years. I've raised two sons in this wonderful community, and I have been an active community volunteer for the past 20 years. I'm genuinely excited about running for reelection. We have put a strong foundation in place and have experienced some positive momentum. For example, we have bike and pedestrian plans that were developed with extensive community input and that are serving as our roadmaps for getting things done. We are operating in a more open and transparent way with our open governance policies. And as mayor, I am particularly pleased to say that this year, we are finally moving forward on some of our strategic priorities, now that we have a foundation in place. I've also been working at the regional level, providing leadership and tackling issues that affect our quality of life right here in Los Altos. Not everything that affects us is done at the local level. It requires collaboration regionally. There is more work to be done, both locally and regionally, and I believe that with my background and experience and my ability to work effectively and respectfully with my colleagues and with staff, positions us to not only maintain the momentum, but to actually accelerate it. Let's build on what we've started, and I ask for your support November 8. Thank you.
Nisa?
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening. My name is Nisa Flagler, and I'm running for Los Altos City Council. First, let me thank the League for hosting this forum today and all of you for attending. As a member of the League, I am very proud to be participating in this forum this evening. I am running because I believe I have the right experience, right energy, to be an effective leader on council. My husband and I chose Los Altos to raise our family, because we appreciated that community and families were priorities. Based on my experience, which includes being an attorney, a former local government employee, a Silicon Valley high-tech employee, vice chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, mom of a young family -- my son is eight, my daughter is four -- my involvement in the community, and just my love for serving, I believe I will add leadership and value to council. My four main goals: one, tackle the existing issues; two, be a voice for Los Altos on regional issues; three, make traffic safety a priority; and four, ensure that Los Altos continues to be a great place for seniors, families, the entire community. I would be honored to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the candidates to make sure that you turn your microphone off when you're done speaking, so that people can't hear what -- can't hear. Thank you. Okay, Alex?
Hello, my name is Alex Glue, and I'm a candidate for Los Altos City Council. I've lived here for 19 years with my wife Martha. We started our married life here. I'd like to share with you my background and some thoughts on the principles I think should guide the city council. It is my desire to show you why I am best suited to serve on city council. My education was rigorous, including two engineering degrees from Berkeley and two more from Stanford, including a doctorate. My career includes a decade in the semiconductor industry and 20 years running an engineering firm. This has taught me to envision concepts, propose them, build consensus with the stakeholders, and then execute high-quality work. The job's not done until you've delivered something. Frequently, I testify as an expert in federal court, the ITC, the PTO, even the High Court of Taiwan. My reputation as a man of integrity with a very clean record is well-established. I've been vetted by many clients, including the Department of Justice. At work, I understand the need for debate. We rely on civility, respect, and a negotiated conclusion to function. This is also how the council must operate. I would extend this courtesy to my colleagues and expect the same. I believe in civic duty and currently serve as the vice chair of the Los Altos Design Review Commission. We review all two-story constructions and other projects that the staff is uncomfortable with. From that experience, I have come to further understand the uniqueness and value that people place on their own neighborhoods. The council must preserve that while managing the rapid growth around us. Thank you.
And Steve, it's your turn.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League for hosting this tonight. My name is Steve Smiley, and I am running for Los Altos City Council. I'm a Los Altos resident and homeowner for 26 years. My wife Kathleen and I were married here in Los Altos at the Los Altos Lutheran Church, 13 years in August. We have an 11-year-old daughter, Caitlin, who goes to our fantastic local public school, Covington Coyote, if you know that. And we are big dog people. We have a Bernice Mountain Dog and a yellow lab. I am actively involved in volunteering at the local public school, at church, and at other community nonprofit organizations. I have a diverse education. I have a BS in engineering, a master's of business administration, and a Juris Doctor of Law. Professionally, I'm a vice president of program management and contracts at L3 Communications. I'm also on the ethics steering committee there. My core strengths are communication skills and the ability to connect with people. My financial and business expertise and decision-making are also a core strength. And finally, leadership based on values of integrity, accountability, and respect. My goals, if elected: one, diverse business downtown that caters to young families; two, being green, development of downtown civic center and also needs to be green and environmentally friendly; and collaboration between town and school district and commissions and community group on new school site and ways to ease traffic. My wife and I plan to spend the rest of our lives here in Los Altos, and I want to use my core strengths to move forward.
Thank you, Steve. Sorry. That was me being firm.
Yes.
Okay, the next question will be -- or the first question will be for all five candidates, and we'll start with Jeannie. What do you envision for the downtown, and does that vision include the community center? Should the visioning plan include them both?
Okay, so thank you for that. So let me take this in its -- as I'm supportive of the direction that council has currently set. For downtown, we are going to start with developing a vision for the downtown, and that does not include the community center or the 18-acre Civic Center site. The reason is, is because downtown serves a very specific purpose and has a specific need that it's trying to meet that is unique to a downtown. Once we end up with that vision, then we will have the opportunity to look at what it'll take to enable that vision. If there's a role for the civic center to play in that enabling, then that would be the time that we would bring it in, as we start to develop a plan for how to implement the vision that we're looking for. So I would take them separately. I think it's important. The other reason it's important to take them separately is because, as a council, we are more effective if we have all five members of the council working as part of the decision-making process. And we already have one council member who is a downtown, and we do not want another conflict.
Thank you. Nisa?
Thank you. So I do support considering the civic center when you're looking at the visioning for downtown. I think they both should be considered. Just some quick background for the audience. The city council recently approved a contract with a consultant to initiate the visioning process focused on downtown. My understanding, as part of that visioning process, they would consider the civic center, and I think it's very important. As part of that visioning process, which I've said to many different groups, it's a first step. But once we have the proposal from this consultant, then the management, the vetting and implementation of that visioning process is what the next city council will need to do, and need to do it effectively in order for that to be successful. Looking at the civic center as part of the visioning process is relevant, because we don't want to develop a plan for downtown and then look at the civic center, especially if there are ways for us to consider both as one plan, and they can complement each other. And I think that's something the consultant should do as part of the process. Thank you.
Alex?
I believe we should consider the downtown and civic center together, but they do not gait on each other. They can complement each other. To the extent that they do, we should take that into consideration. I believe we need to rely upon other methods to come up with ideas in this community, because we've fallen short too many times. We need to work with the elected leaders each other, but we also need to work with the non-elected leaders and other organizations, such as the League of Women Voters, and use simple methods such as web-based surveys to generate a lot of concepts quickly and see what it is that the businesspeople and the residents want here. Essentially, the downtown is lagging. It needs more vitality. We need better traffic flow, so it's easy for us to get to. We need better parking. I think that there's a lot of potential here, and the 18 acres here can be a beautiful site. Coupled with the downtown that we have, it could be quite a jewel among cities in this country.
Thank you. And Steve?
Thank you. So I believe that the visioning for downtown and the civic center should be a holistic approach, where both of them are used together. There are many benefits that can be attained from doing that for both together. If you have some parking issues downtown, you might be able to address that with the civic center. But in all, we need a civic center and downtown that is vibrant for young families coming to Los Altos. So we have to make sure that the civic center has enough programs for both the young kids and the elderly, and that the downtown and the civic center are jointly with that.
And Lynette?
Nancy, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat the question, because some people stated things that I think made it two different questions.
Okay. What do you envision for the downtown, and does that vision include the community center? Should the visioning plan include them both?
Okay, we have a beautiful downtown. We have to find the right formula. What do I envision for downtown? I envision it to be a place where people want to go. We want to make sure that it's going to be a place that attracts people and our residents, and they're going to enjoy going there. We've had the pop-up park that attracted people there, so having more green space in downtown would be a plus. We definitely need a plan. We don't have a clear plan, and we definitely need a clear plan. And some of the candidates did touch upon some points that were good points. I think we can look at it separately and simultaneously, but it does not need to be looked at holistically. And so I would definitely look at -- my vision is to look at the changes and what residents want. I'm definitely a resident-focused candidate, and I want to make sure it's a place that attracts people. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so everybody turn your microphones off, and we'll ask the next question. Okay, so Nisa, you're going to start this one, and we'll go around. And it's a follow-up really to the last question, and that is, "How would you make the southern part of Los Altos feel more included, both in the visioning process and in services received?"
Thanks, Nancy, and that's a very important question, because we're one community. You know, people refer to North Los Altos, South Los Altos, and the different neighborhoods. But we're one Los Altos. And I think when we're looking at the visioning for downtown, the civic center, even though physically they're located in what's considered North Los Altos, we definitely need to engage the entire community. We're all supporting it through our tax base, and so we need to engage the entire community to make sure their needs, their values are also reflected in these locations. You know, one case in point would be how we survey these different groups. I remember when Measure A failed, as part of a group, we looked to see, you know, whether or not things could have been done differently. And what we heard from the community was, they didn't feel engaged. They didn't feel their needs were reflected. And I think we need to validate participation from the entire community to make sure their needs are represented. And if there are things that we can locate in South Los Altos, for example, the Grant Park senior program. I've visited that senior program, and it's doing well, and so as a city council member, I would support that program.
Thank you. And Alex?
I have a simple proposal for surveying the community, not just on South Los Altos, but on all issues. I believe we should use web-based surveys. Simply send out a postcard to every registered voter with the PIN code. They can go to a website and give their input. Then we would know who had given input and who hadn't. We can't have the same 100 people in every survey, and we can't ask consultants for what we want and need. So we need to make sure that we get South Los Altos input. I live in Loyola Corners. I'd like, you know, input, too. So we need -- and if we don't get the input on these surveys of what they want, we need to go down there with roadshows and drive input from the community. Certainly, the parks down there and the senior center need an upgrade. We can't obsess just on the civic center in downtown. We need to give equal treatment and equal funding to activities throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. You know, Nisa hit on a good point when we talked about the huge failure of Measure A. When Measure A was brought up, I think there was a wall put up, so individuals from South Los Altos were left out, and the elderly were left out. People from Los Altos School District were left out in discussions for the civic center. So in order to be successful, you have to bring in that constituency from all those individuals and have collaboration with all the groups. And that's bringing in those people from South Los Altos as well, to be a part of that decision-making process.
Okay, thank you. Lynette?
We need to make sure that everyone feels -- Thank you. That they're fairly and equitably treated. And I think that I have done some programs that really have engaged both South and North Los Altos and brought the communities together. Starting the summer concert series has really brought North and South together. Starting the senior program at Grant Park, we have seniors that come from the North Los Altos over to South Los Altos. We've bridged that community. We have to understand why they feel disenfranchised. We have to ensure that they don't feel like funding has only been for North Los Altos. We have to make sure that they have a voice. So we want to make sure that everyone feels that they have been treated equitably and fairly, and so that's, as a candidate or as a council member, I will ensure that.
Thank you. And Jeannie?
So having served for four years on city council, I can tell you that it's not for a lack of trying. First of all, we do not have a North and a South Los Altos, okay? We are one Los Altos. We're less than seven square miles. We're basically four miles end to end. So when we look at how we're working on things, I think there's a couple of things that we need to continue to focus on. One is all the different mechanisms for engaging our community. And that means, not only do we have to make them available, but it also means that our residents have an obligation as well, or a responsibility, to also say, "Is this important to me, and do I want to participate in that?" So -- and it's hard. It's very difficult. I think we will continue and should continue to look at multi-ways of getting out to folks, so that people can participate different times of the day, different days of the week, different modes, electronic, non-electronic, et cetera. And so I think we can continue to do some work in this area.
Thank you. Okay, so Alex, you're going to be up first, and I'm talking traffic. So there's a lot of traffic issues, not the least of which is El Camino Real and the bus rapid transit ideas. What is your position on El Camino bus rapid transit?
I understand that the BRT plan, bus rapid transit, has been eliminated from the recent county bond measure on transportation, that it is essentially a very unpopular subject. I don't support it. I don't think it's the best way to move traffic. In telecommunications, as well as transportation, you have long haul, medium haul, and short haul. To pretend that a bus is appropriate for medium haul, El Camino's a very long haul, is wrong. Not spend any capital necessary for light rail and other sorts of medium haul transportation. It doesn't allow one substitute bus, and the ball except the main artery, which would then force traffic into the side streets, such as Questa in Los Altos. The 23 transit authorities, or 24 in the Bay Area, in general don't coordinate, and that's a problem. And we need to vigorously gauge and regional school, avoid things like yours.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, I'm on the same page with Alex there. I'm not in favor of the bus rapid transit. I think there are other means by which we can reduce traffic here in Los Altos, and that should be incorporated when we do the downtown development. I heard a good statement at a presentation the other night, "To make a complete street downtown." And that means make a town-town that's viable for walking, for riding bikes, for individuals to reduce car traffic downtown. And so I think that, along with the bike lanes, increasing those as well, is a good opportunity to reduce traffic.
Thank you. Lynette?
Regarding a dedicated bus lane, I have to think about how it's gonna impact our residents. You have up to 950 cars per hour, and we cannot... We have to have everyone sharing the roads. We have to look at how that's gonna affect our residents. All those cars would then funnel into our neighborhoods and our streets. So, we don't want to force people into our neighborhoods. We need to find the right way to get involved. We don't need a brick-and-mortar solution to a 21st century problem. So, I truly believe that everyone needs to share the road, and we can all commute harmoniously, as best as we can.
Jeannie?
So, if I go to the highest level in terms of the traffic in our community, there's two primary things that are affecting our quality of life. One is one that we impose upon ourselves, which is our moving our children to schools and our heavy use of the automobile and the congestion that we create around our schools. That is where the city can do its work to improve the safety around our schools and making sure our kids have safe routes to school. The second area, though, is the area in terms of the cut, what I refer to as a cut-through traffic in Los Altos. We have a regional problem in terms of a job-housing imbalance, with housing to the south of us, jobs to the north. And Los Altos is in a prime location, that when our systems get clogged up, people come off of the main arteries and come through our towns. We have an opportunity, all of us, on November, we have Measure B on the ballot. One of the things that I do is I serve on the VTA Board, I'm the vice chair this year, and we have put into that measure things that will have a direct positive impact for the city of Los Altos. I ask that you look at that.
Thank you. And Nisa?
So, two of my goals, as I mentioned at the beginning, are, one, making traffic safety a priority, and being a voice for Los Altos at regional issues. And both those goals apply to your question. I am also opposed to the proposal to have the bus lane program, the piloted program where you have designated lanes. I understand the concern about increased traffic in our community, and also the fact that we do have more people commuting to Silicon Valley and needing to use El Camino to get to work. So, I understand the issue. But the proposal about having designated bus lanes would not solve that issue, and it would also create a negative impact on the Los Altos streets. We already have a lot of traffic cutting through our neighborhoods, people who do not live in Los Altos, and so they're trying to get from El Camino to Foothill Expressway. And so, I'm opposed... I was opposed to the pilot program when I first heard about it. I think there are other ways to address it because of the negative impact in Los Altos. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Steve, you're gonna go first on this one. Ready? The Los Altos City Council has a history of communication difficulties. What is your plan to improve that situation?
As I stated in one of my goals... As I stated in one of my goals, collaboration is very important. When I'm out walking, the street canvassing, I've been taking notes on individuals and what they see needs to be improved about the city council. That's one way to do it. You can walk door-to-door and ask people. That's a good way. They give you their honest opinion when nobody else is standing around. But, you know, along with that, there's gotta be the collaboration with the school district, with the commissions. We've got a big group of commissions out there, and I think they're vital to that collaboration and bringing that information back. And there's half a dozen and several dozen community groups as well. So, taking that collaboration with the community groups, along with the commissions, school district, and just individuals in town, I think is the way to improve that.
Thank you. Lynette?
Well, how can we improve that and the relationships? Well, definitely voting for me. I have demonstrated, in the 11 years that I served on the Parks Commission, that I can work with a variety of people. I have served two terms on the grand jury, which are juries of 19 members. It is hard to get people to come together and agree upon something, as you write reports, that have to have a common idea and with backed up with facts. So, we have... I have all these experiences behind me. I've served as chair on the League of Women Voters Education Committee, and we had to work with a variety of members and communities to establish forums, education forums, and to reach out to community members, to establish new programs. I've worked with the community. I've worked with residents, and I've reached out to so many people. So, I have demonstrated experience.
Thank you. Jeannie?
Yeah, so I understood the question in terms of how would we address some of the communication challenges. Communication is actually a two-way street and usually, but some of it starts with how you get information out there to begin with. In the four years since being on council, I think we have done some specific things. I ran on community engagement. We have a brand-new website. We have the ability for our residents to go in and subscribe to various news vehicles. We've done it in a way that you don't get bombarded with information. You can pick and choose. You have Nixle. We have Nextdoor. We use... We have news and announcements that come out. Starting in May, we introduced a weekly, what's called a Weekly City Manager Up-Date, that really lets you know totally at a different level in terms of stuff that is happening around town. Also, as mayor, we invoked a office hours. And we've been taking the office hours out to the residents, different days of the week, again, different times of the day, different locations and such. I think we need to continue in this vein.
Thank you. Nisa?
Thank you. In addition to the things that Jeannie just mentioned, the electronic ways of communicating with the community, I do think you need personal engagement. I serve as the vice chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and most of our meetings were scheduled to be held right here in City Hall. And as a commission, we decided that we wanted to have some of our meetings at Grant Park. And that's because we recognize the importance of engaging the community, going to the different areas, the different corners of our community, and making it clear that we represent all the different voices in Los Altos, and we want to hear your concerns as well. And so, we need to identify those different forums, whereas, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to be a city council member, that's one thing I would do. I would make sure that in my role, I engage the community, both on a personal level and also engaging in a lot of the things that Jeannie just mentioned. In addition to that, I think we need to also build trust. And building trust takes time. And if you make a commitment, you have to follow through on the commitment and build that trust throughout the community, and I am prepared to do that.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes. The Los Altos City Council has a history of communication difficulties. What is your plan to improve that situation?
I'm going to address that in two parts. The first is the communication difficulty that they have with each other. That's unacceptable. I'm used to sometimes contentious situations in business. I testify frequently. I'm used to having my words recorded and being crucified by opposing council about my opinion. It doesn't mean that you aren't courteous and professional. Sometimes you're working with the same people in three months. The city council needs to work together, week after week. They're going to agree, they're going to disagree, they're gonna try to get consensus again next time. So, I would expect that there be just a higher level of requirement for civility and communications. There is a Brown Act. You can't talk among three people, a majority, but you can do round robins, where one week you study the issues with one of your colleagues, the next week with a different one. The other aspect is communicating outward. The council needs to work with the non-elected leadership, all of the organizations and people within town, to make sure that they know what is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette, the next question, we'll start with you, and again, we're still gonna have all five answer the question. What experience do you have to work effectively at a regional level?
I've worked... When I served on the grand jury for two terms, we worked with various agencies. So, I feel that my experience serving on the grand jury, working with multiple agencies countywide, demonstrates that I have the experience and the knowledge on understanding on how to communicate with people on all levels. It's been a great experience. We've been exposed to other communities as well. I've worked with other counties as well, through friends who serve on other offices, and I've worked on their committees as well. So, I feel that I have the experience and knowledge to work with regional boards. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeannie?
Thank you for this question. This is an area that in my four years on city council, I have worked at a regional level in a variety of capacities, including things that deal across county boundaries between San Mateo County and Santa Clara County, such as the Grand Boulevard Initiative. But most importantly for me is, I have been really involved in the transportation issues because, again, it's a quality-of-life issue for Los Altos. And as I said, I serve... Not only do I serve on the board of VTA, I'm actually the vice chair. And the reason I got that position is because I am very collaborative in work, and I have the full support of my colleagues on that board, in terms of figuring out how to work with our diverse set of needs. I can tell you, San Jose and Los Altos, my needs are not the same. But we've been able to very effectively change the focus and look more broadly at the entire region. Also, I serve on the Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and that's another one where we're trying to accelerate and bring clean energy to our residents, and it forces us to work collaboratively.
Thank you. You okay? Okay. Nisa?
So, I've worked in local government for over nine years. I was with Santa Clara County for over nine years in the county council's office. And in that capacity, I worked directly with the county departments and agencies and department heads, and also with the other counties in the area, San Mateo County, San Francisco County, Marin County, and also at the state level. What I don't think I've mentioned, and I don't think it's on my website, I've also worked at the Export-Import Bank in DC. I also worked for the Commodity Futures Trading Association in DC. And so, I have federal government experience as well. And that experience is very relevant, because, you know, especially working at the county, you learn the nuts and bolts of how local government functions. And it's different from the private sector. And that experience is very critical to serving on city council, because you will understand, you'll have a better understanding of how to interact with the different council members, how to work with staff, and what you can really accomplish as an elected public official, which is very different from what you accomplish in the private sector.
Thank you. Alex?
I'm comfortable working with startups with a few people and the federal government. My clients have included the United States Air Force, the Department of Justice. My clients, even the last few years, have included companies like Caterpillar and 3M that are larger than the entire county by a factor of five, in terms of budget. I've also worked with the state architect on engineering projects, getting things through that have to be approved at the state level, as well as the federal courts. I don't see a problem working regionally. I'm used to working with numerous types of organizations, many that are very codified, stratified, like government organizations, agencies tend to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve?
Yes, thank you. You know, whether it's working on the executive board at church, or the executive council with the PTA, or as a vice president at the company I work at, it's all about working with people and working trade-offs and collaboration, and coming to a common goal and moving forward. So, the differences are in dollar values for those three I just talked about. You know, the church, a couple hundred thousand; school, a couple hundred thousand. At work, it's about $200 million. But the process is still the same. It's working to a common goal and working with the individuals on the other side to reach a conclusion that works for both of you. And again, sometimes there's trade-offs. There's always collaboration for that common goal. Thank you.
Thanks. So, now, we're gonna switch a little bit, and I'm going to ask this next question of just three members of the panel, and that's Jeannie, Nisa, and Alex. We'll get this question. What can the city do to facilitate or help Los Altos School District find a solution to their overcrowding problem? And we'll start with you, Jeannie.
I think that's been a question for a number of years now. So, we have worked with the school district, trying to find a solution. It is challenging, and so where we are at this point in time is, the school board is looking very carefully at their own land, and they're looking at the ability to acquire some land. When you look at it from a community at large, that allows us to look for more of a win-win solution, so that one is not giving up and giving to the other. We have to work together. I think the biggest role that we can have right now is looking and working with them to help them to find a solution that gives us safe opportunities for the kids to get to and from school. And so, I think that's where we need to work together, creative solutions on how we can open up areas to allow traffic to flow to get to a new school, if that's the direction that the school board chooses to go.
Thank you. Nisa?
Thanks Nancy. I'm proud to have the endorsement of two school board trustees and two trustee elects. And when I met with them, we had very long conversations about how we would work together if I am fortunate enough to be elected to council, because it's very important for the school boards and city council to work together on common issues. We both represent the community, and especially as the mom of a young family. It's personal. I have many friends and families here in Los Altos who care about, you know, the future of our schools. Many of us moved to Los Altos because of the schools. And we want to make sure that we still... We continue to have great schools, and in order to do that, we will need to find a facility solution. And so, if I am a council member, I will work closely with the school board to identify ways that the city council can help and facilitate that accomplishment, because I think it will make a better community for everybody in Los Altos.
Thank you. And Alex?
The school district serves Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, and Mountain View. As a civic organization, we need to coordinate with the other civic organizations to make sure that the local traffic and the local pedestrian safety is in place for wherever the school district decides to cite their school. There may or may not be the five acres in downtown Los Altos for a school, but it may exist somewhere on the border of Los Altos and Mountain View, or in Los Altos Hills. Whatever that solution is, and it's up to the school district, not us, we just need to support it so that kids can get to and from school safely, and that it doesn't bollocks up the streets and neighborhoods for everyone.
Thank you. The next question will also be a three-person question, and we'll start with Steve, and then Lynette and Jeannie. This question is... Gosh, I think I know the answer to this question. Does Los Altos need more parking downtown? And if so, how would you address the need?
Parking. Parking is usually on one of the lists that the individuals have concerns when I'm out canvassing. And, you know, there's a couple of items you can do for parking. There's the management of parking, which is kind of the first step on the ease. You can put meters in, put meters in in front of businesses. That'll help free up that space downtown, so individuals looking to park right in front of the stores they want to go to can do that. You can change the time allotment for parking spaces. You know, city council could take a look at doing that. You can... And that's part of the management process. There's the supply part of it, where you could take a look at restriping. I've seen a few plans where restriping some of the parking. You can get up to additional 200 parking spots downtown. And then, there's probably the third level is talking about a garage, a parking garage. So, those are kind of the three levels of options for parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette?
I commend the efforts of the Downtown Parking Committee for all the work they have done to make us understand...
to make us understand the parking concerns and the parking issues downtown. But we really truly can't understand that because we really have not had access to that report. So I would like to see more of that type of leadership. I'd like to see that report. I'd like to see their recommendations to really understand how we can address some of the concerns that they have identified. And to do that, we need to work with our volunteers who have worked so hard to bring that information forward. So that's why we need to empower our citizens to have a real impact, working with us, to address our problems. Thank you.
And
Jeanne? Do we have a parking problem downtown? I think it depends on your perspective. So first of all, in terms of as residents and users of our downtown, we clearly have a problem during our peak times, which are around the lunch, the couple of hours around lunch. We also have a parking potentially problem when you look at in terms of enabling our development of our downtown and trying to bring new things to our downtown. Because as we, we need solutions that will allow our development to occur. There was, when one of our newest colleagues, Mr. Mordell and I did form a parking committee. The committee has done a lot of work, as has been pointed out. Unfortunately, we ran into an issue with the Brown Act. And so the city now has an obligation to cure that. And so we're in the process of curing the Brown Act violation. And we're going to take the parking information, and we're going to feed it into our downtown visioning because it is one of the key pieces of information that is needed as we go into our visioning.
Thank you. The next question will go to Nisa, Alex, and Steve. And the question is, how can the city create public-private partnerships to fund projects that are needed, but the city, but that the city by itself cannot fund? For example, a theater.
I think looking for public-private funding opportunities should be at the top of the city's list when looking at different projects. For example, one of the reasons why Measure A failed was the community felt like the $65 million bond wasn't adequately explained, and whether or not the city looked at alternative sources of funding before putting the bond out. So I support exploring private and public funding opportunities. You know, a good example is I know there's a recent proposal from a private investor company to do a park in downtown with underground parking. That's a private investor coming in to invest in our city. And so we need to look for those opportunities, you know, make sure that it's, it's made public that Los Altos welcomes those opportunities. And we also have to make sure that if we do accept such opportunities, that we still maintain the character and charm of Los Altos. And that is always at the forefront of whatever projects we take on as a city.
Thank you. The next ques- I'm sorry. Getting off my silly little chart here. Alex?
The first thing we need are very clear codes and precise plans, if necessary, for the area being affected. Business needs to understand what rules they're playing by. There needs to be an open and level playing field so that we can develop not just private-public partnerships, but the private aspects in general in Los Altos. For example, if you look at the current parking codes downtown, we're probably 1,300 spots short if you applied the current rules. It forces everything into variance, which makes everything go to city council. Whether or not you get a project through just depends upon the mood of the day, potentially, and business people aren't comfortable with that. Public-private partnerships need, can't be in that position. They need to know what they're getting into, what the rules will be, and how they're going to compete. So that's the kind of scenario we need to set up, a win-win scenario, where we get maximum competition from multiple sources, and we can be really picky and choosy about the projects that we let into Los Altos so that it's a win-win situation.
Thank you. And Steve?
Yeah, I absolutely support public-private partnerships going forward. I think that's an excellent opportunity to take care of, take advantage of, a financial opportunity there. Versus going with a bond or going through a loan. That's an opportunity for the city to reach out to the private sector and get some financing for that. And I would absolutely love to have a theater downtown here. I did attend the presentation that was given for the parking garage. The underground, I think it was an underground parking garage. They were going to put a park on top of the parking garage underneath. And so, you know, that, that could be a consideration if we had a parking problem. We talked about earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next question will be for Lynette, Jeanne, and Nisa. What do you see as the relationship between the Los Altos City Council and the Los Altos School District?
Relationship with the Los Altos School District and the city council? It should be the same relationship that they have with other school districts. Our city serves Mountain View School District, Mountain View High School District. We also serve Cupertino and Fremont Union High School District. And we also serve some of the students that attend Palo Alto schools. We cannot favor one school district. We need to treat everyone equitably and fairly. We have to make sure our relationship with all school districts are equal. We have to make sure that every one of our residents know that we do value education. Whether children go to public school, private school, we are going to support all our students and no matter what school district they're involved in. But we want to support all the school districts that are part of this city.
Thank you. Jeanne?
I definitely agree with Lynette. I know there's a lot of focus on LASD and the city, but we are served by several school districts. So to me, the best role that we play in terms of that relationship is having a regular opportunity to come together, to share issues and concerns, and to work on the things that are best for us to collaborate on. When there's ideas to kick around and such, we have that in place today. I think the last meeting just occurred, was it last week? Or this week, and it was, you know, dealing with things, ideas like busing. How do we, you know, add safety, dealing with specific issues? And that's, that's the kind of relationship we need to have, and again, with any district that wants to have that conversation, we need to have those open conversations.
Thank you. And Nisa?
I do think city council needs to have an ongoing and open dialogue with all the school districts in Los Altos that serve our students. As I mentioned before, I've already started that conversation with current and future board trustees. And we've talked about issues like traffic safety, and how we can work together to improve traffic safety and implement traffic calming measures around our schools. And on common issues like that, I think it's very important for us to work on together as a team. I do support having ongoing meetings as well. I remember talking to one of the board members, and we were comparing today's relationship between the school board and city council, and how it was in the past. I've talked to former school board members and former city council members, who are still best friends today. And that's because of the relationship they had back then, and their ability to work together and identify common issues to make our community what it is today. And I think both the different school districts in Los Altos and the city council have that role and responsibility to play to ensure that our community remains the same.
Thank you. All right, the next question will be for Alex, Steve, and Lynette. And the question is, do you have a vision for improving bike and pedestrian safety?
As a licensed engineer, I have some understanding of some of these situations. Essentially, we have a very limited bicycle and pedestrian safety program in this city. If you think about it, we don't have sidewalks in most places. We don't have bicycle paths. There, there are plans now that are starting to appear and to be developed, but the long-term bicycle and pedestrian safety program needs to be coupled with the development plans in the city. Where are the future schools going to go? In fact, if a school is going to be two-story instead of one-story because there isn't room for another school, we're going to double up traffic in that area. So our plans need to support the level of traffic we plan on having downtown if we vitalize the downtown, wherever the new school needs to be. And if, you know, worse comes to worse, if we have to endure a bus rapid transit and a close of the lane on El Camino, that too. But basically, it's sort of, it goes hand in hand with all the other development.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, one of my goals if elected is being green. And being green, in that sense, meant the development of downtown that also needs to be environmentally friendly. And that means making a downtown that, I talked about that earlier, a complete street. This is a street that has widened walkways for individuals to walk down. That has access for bicycles and bike lanes to travel downtown. And again, to reduce the number of cars that are traveling downtown. They have parking spots for bikes as well. So that's part of the process of being, having a complete street and the vision for downtown that I have.
Thank you. And Lynette?
We definitely need to support biking and our pedestrian safety. Like I said earlier, I would reinstate the traffic commission. I think it was a mistake to, to remove that. We need a traffic commission to focus on helping to make, you know, enhance walkability and making sure our streets are safe. We have started projects with our old traffic commission that we can no longer continue. The traffic commission in the past was able to obtain grants, which made more bike paths and walking paths a reality. So we definitely need to reinstate a traffic commission. And once again, I would work with the police department to enforce the three Es, engineering, education, and enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be Jeanne, Nisa, and Alex. You guys figured out my little system here, right? Okay. How would you make seniors feel more involved in the planning of the senior center? Jeanne?
I think the seniors, like any of the other groups in, in our city, all need to have their needs met and need to be part of the overall process. So I think we will treat them like we treat the other groups. But the one thing that I want to say that we have done is we're trying to engage more of our seniors in terms of our new commission structure. Here, when we, we found sometimes it was challenging getting people to come forward. And also when we look at the term, and so we've changed the term for our senior commission to two years. And we're also allowing them and having them work in both, in their outreach generally, across all the subject matters. So I think we need to just, again, go out, meet them where they are. That means involving them at the places where they come to, where they congregate in. It's just like we need to do our parks people by going out to the parks in each of the other constituencies.
Thank you. Nisa?
I think it's very important for us as a community to engage our seniors. They're so valuable to Los Altos, and the reason why many of us moved here. They're part of the community. And I think we need to engage them, one, directly. So go to the different senior programs. We have one here at Hillview. We have one at Grant Park. But also go to the terraces, park regions, all the different places that we know we have our seniors. And, you know, set up meetings, have coffee, cookies, you know, and really listen to them and get their feedback and input about what they want to see in our community in order for them to stay here, and in order for us to just make it a better place for them as well. We also need to empower the senior commission. I support the direction that has been given to the newly formed senior commission. But I think we need to empower the senior commission in their role to really work directly with the seniors, engage them and identify their needs, and communicate that back and make recommendations to city council. And it's important for city council.
Alex?
In business, if you don't know what your customers want, you ask them. We should start by asking them what they want. Most of us aren't experts in senior care and what seniors need or want. What one also should do is look at benchmarks. What are the best practices in other cities? If we go to St. Paul, Minneapolis, what do they do for seniors? If we go to Prescott, Arizona, what do they do for seniors? We can learn from other cities, and we're going to need to, because we have a very, done a very poor job for the seniors. We have a higher obligation for, to people who cannot necessarily care for themselves or have challenges. Seniors and children have a special place, or should have a special place, in our society. Now, we don't have unlimited budgets, so this process of identifying what we can offer needs to be prioritized and vetted, and then implemented. We certainly need a senior commission in place, but we need more than the commission. We need the council and the staff of the city to put more effort into the senior plans that we have. We have a large senior population in this city, and we owe them.
Thank you. Next question will be for Steve, Lynette, and Jeanne. What is your position on keeping the 30 and 35-foot height limits on buildings in the downtown area? This was recently recommended by the Downtown Building Committee, appointed by the city council. You're first, Steve.
Thank you.
Lucky?
So the height limit, I think, has been in discussion by quite a few people recently. And I've been to a few presentations where they talk about FAR. FAR is looking at the, the foot area space that's applicable instead of just the height. I think this is a good opportunity, especially with the development downtown. And I've seen some of the, the development and the architecture displays. It does make for a nice-looking downtown where you can take a building, push it back off of the sidewalk, maybe raise the height limit a little bit, and have an architecturally pleasing building and structure. So that is my response. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynette?
So zoning laws are here to protect- So let me repeat that. Our zoning laws are here to protect our residents. And our current city council has not been enforcing it. If we need to change it, to make, and we all need to, the city council needs to comply with it. They shouldn't be negotiating with developers. They should, if they're going to negotiate with developers, they need to do it where it's advantageous for our residents. So it's either to get more affordable housing units in there when we need to, but we should not be violating those zoning codes. If we need to do a better job, we got to live and operate by those zoning codes, which are 60 years old, but we should not just, you know, create variances for everyone. We need to follow our codes better, and then if you want to change them, change them. But we need to do it within a process and as a council.
Thank you. Jeanne?
So the question was about building heights, and so a couple of years back, we changed, the council changed the building heights on First Street, or kind of on the perimeter, saying that we wanted to bring in some vitality. We needed to bring in more, so we raised it up to 45 feet. As a result of that, we now have some buildings that are compliant with our new zoning codes as far as height. But we're having a different reaction to them. We've seen examples where it's worked really well, and we've seen examples where it doesn't. So the Buildings Committee was a group that was put together to look at what's happening in terms of our buildings, and yes, they made a recommendation to reduce the height so that we have a uniform height across all of downtown. We've asked that to go through our process, and that staff has evaluated it. It's gone to the Planning Commission. I don't know if it's finished coming out of the Planning Commission, and then it will come to the council. One of the primary reasons for looking at reducing the height is as we try to figure out what we want in terms of economic vitality, the look and feel, and all the other subjective, as well as objective, things, we need to have a temporary thing to prevent height development.
Thank you. The next one is Nisa, Alex, and Steve. Nisa, you're going to go first. Here's the question. What role does the city of Los Altos have in making affordable housing available to its employees?
So I think as a council, we have a responsibility to seek affordable housing opportunities throughout the city. And there are three ways to do this, and these are also applicable even to city employees. One, we need to ensure that we maintain existing affordable- One, we need to ensure that we maintain existing affordable housing units. We also need to explore funding opportunities for, for affordable housing. And the third thing is to enforce the city's multifamily affordable housing ordinance. So, those are three things city council needs to do. It's part of the city's housing element, and that, that will definitely help the city promote and increase opportunities for affordable housing, which would also help city employees. I think it's important because we do have a lot of city employees who are not part of our community. And so, they commute into the city, that some of them get here really early in the morning to avoid traffic. And we want to make sure that we're creating an environment that's welcoming and easier for our employees and their families. And one way of doing that is to create housing opportunities for them.
Thank you. Alex?
Below market housing, BMR housing, comes in two first, two main flavors, purchased and rental. I, for the most part, think rental housing of below-market rate is a preferred solution because that way it always stays below-market rate housing. You don't have people buying that and then transitioning to jobs that pay hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, and they're still in BMR housing, and other people can't live there. One way to address that is to have secondary living units expanded. I'm on the Design Review Commission, and we review secondary living units. Currently, if you have a 15,000-square-foot lot, you can build a standalone building. If you have a 13,000-square-foot lot, you can have one within your home. So, we might think about, one, grandfathering in many of the secondary living units that already exist in our community, at the same time, making sure they're brought up to code as appropriate and made safe. Two, we might drop the secondary living unit from 13,000 to 12,000 feet and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Steve?
It's really nice to go third. Got a lot of the answers, um... So, I agree with everything these guys just said. I'll, I'll add to that. The Los Altos School District just implemented a program for teachers to help them find housing here in the city because, like we talked about earlier, they just can't afford the usual housing. So, I mean, I agree with Alex when he say we want to expand, the possibility to expand the second-using unit housing on lots. And then, for future development, ongoing development, obviously, still enforce the low-income housing. And, you know, maybe look about increasing the percentage of the number of low-income units in the development as well. So, I applaud the LSAD for putting into that program to help find housing for teachers and for city employees.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next question for three people again, Lynette, Jeannie, and Nisa. Lynette, you'll go first. Silicon Valley Clean Energy will bring us clean electricity next April. What is the next big environmental issue for Los Altos?
The next big environmental issue for Los Altos, I think, is maintaining our green space and taking, we have several actually. We have to look at taking care of our deferred maintenance, and that will allow us to address the stormwater problem that we have. So, we need to put that in place. We have monies in place to address our deferred maintenance issues, and we also have monies in place to maintain our green space. We, we have opportunities to take care of what we can. We can identify issues, but can we address them? My goal is to be able to address our problems. So, I think we have a lot of major problems. We also have the Climate Action Plan in place. We need to work with our commission to move those things forward, but we need to work with our commissions better, and we need to work on moving our deferred maintenance forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you start, I realized that Alex and Steve would be answering one question less than everybody else, so I'm going to have all five of, no, I'm going to have all five of you answer this one. Okay, so Jeannie, go ahead.
Could you then restate the question, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I kept them in a neat stack. Silicon Valley Clean Energy will bring us clean electricity next April. What is the next big environmental issue for us, for Los Altos?
Okay, so, the city adopted a climate action plan, and we put the stewardship, the stewardship of that with our Environmental Commission. And it was our Environmental Commission that actually identified the biggest single thing we can do in terms of the environment and reducing greenhouse gas emissions was the formation of a clean energy program. So, we've, we've done that. The next things we need to look at is looking at how we reduce vehicle miles traveled. And then, we also need to look at where, what we can do at the individual level. We are looking to our Environmental Commission to identify those next things. I know that they have on their next agenda an exciting new program to see whether or not that will also help us move the needle. But I think we need to stick with our Climate Action Plan and make progress toward that rather than bring in a lot of other new things that was based on evidence, and I think we need to stay with our plan and then accelerate the pieces that are next in line.
Thank you. Nisa?
I second moving forward with a lot of the measures proposed in the Climate Action Plan that was adopted in 2013. I think one of the major issues that Los Altos needs to get ahead of is the environmental health of our community. As I mentioned, one of my goals is to ensure that Los Altos continues to be a great place for the entire community. And part of that is making sure that we have a very environmentally healthy in place for kids, seniors, and the entire community. And part of that is, you know, having more bike and pedestrian-friendly routes, implementing the increased energy efficiency measure that's part of the Climate Action Plan, education where we work with different partners and stakeholder groups to get the message out there about how important it is for Los Altos to get ahead of this issue before it's too late. And so, that would be one of the things I would want to address as a city council member. And if a project were to come before me, that would be one of the questions I would ask. What is the impact on our environment? How will this affect the environmental health of our community?
Thank you. Alex?
I don't think the City of Los Altos is really in a position to meet the 2020 Climate Action Plan. It includes, among other things, the requirement to reduce miles traveled by city employees. They'd all have to carpool to work in a few years. I don't think we've run that by them yet. Largely, the Climate Action Plan brings us into compliance with the state of California laws. As a licensed engineer, one hears about these. One of the requirements will be net-zero housing, where housing is put in place that consumes zero energy. It is triple insulated on the windows, has solar power, all this and that. On the Design Review Commission, I've seen one house so far that even claims to be net-zero on energy. So, the biggest area for energy savings that come about in a city like ours over which we have control is actually buildings. We don't control cars. That's a state and federal mandate. But housing and buildings, buildings like this, the developers we work with need to be brought in line, so at least the portions that will be in compliant with state law are in place, and those plans don't exist. They should.
Thank you. And Steve?
Sorry, could you repeat the question?
I just handed my card away. Sorry. It's what's the next big environmental issue for Los Altos?
I didn't think I was...
That's a short version of it.
I didn't think I was on there, so she was adding one. You know, the, I think the next big issue is, is dealing with the traffic, the increased traffic and the pollution that comes from traffic. Dealing with traffic and the increased pollution that comes from the increased cars that we have coming down through our city here of Los Altos, coming down San Antonio, coming down Foothill Expressway. So, that'll be the challenge. I, I looked at a lot of the goals in the, the climate plan, and we've reached some of them early, which I think is a good, good idea. And I support all of the measures going forward on the Climate Action Plan to try to reach those goals for 2020. So, I'm, I'm not giving up and saying we're not going to reach them. I'd still like to see us make those goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's reset our microphones, and now it's time for closing statements, and we'll do those in the reverse order from how we did the opening statements, which means Steve, you're going to be first for closing statements, and you have a minute and a half for your closing statement.
All right. Thank you again to the League for hosting us this evening. It's quite an experience. I understand that city council is hard work, and I'm looking forward to putting in that hard work. I'm no stranger to hard work. I have an MBA and a Juris Doctor of Law, and I got both of those while working full-time through evening school. So, I, I don't have all the answers to all the questions that will come before the city council, but I look forward to working with the other city council members to collaborate on a resolution that'll be the best for the city council and for the city of Los Altos. I believe it's my ability to connect with people and the experience that I've developed in my career and education and volunteering here in Los Altos that provides the leadership necessary to be a successful city council member. So, I'll ask for your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
I think the council's top three objectives need to be to foster civic participation on key issues, to make good decisions, and to communicate cross-laterally and externally. We need to foster leadership by working with the many non-elected leaders to develop more consensus on the big decisions we face. We need to practice good decision-making, such as having long-term plans to properly fund roads and storm drain infrastructure, so, for example, the EPA doesn't come down on us, which would be embarrassing. We need to seek and value input from residents and community leaders on potential city plans before we launch those plans. We can build consensus using modern engagement methods. I've spoken of those. We need to drive engagement in the portions of the city that are not currently engaged or disenfranchised for some reason. Along with old-fashioned listening and modern methods to collect information, we can develop consensus on the issues we face that we'd like to solve: traffic, pedestrian safety, the civic center, the downtown plan, and where it goes. We can make this 18 acres that we're on now, we can make the downtown just a beautiful thing with consensus with all of the organizations and people in Los Altos together behind a plan. But that's really where the work starts, and that's what we need to do. Please vote for me, Alex Glub. I hope to make this a better Los Altos.
Thank you. Nisa? And Alex, will you turn your mic off? Thanks.
So, first, let me thank the League again for hosting this forum and all of you for sitting through the forum so patiently. As I mentioned at the beginning, I believe I have the right experience and the right energy to be an effective council member. As a council member, I will work with the other members to identify common ground and move issues forward so we can effectively tackle issues. I will engage the entire community. We talked about North Los Altos, South Los Altos, the different neighborhoods. I will ensure that all these different corners of our community are engaged and feel included and involved, and that their interests are adequately represented on council. I will also take a lead role in building bridges in our community where necessary. I've been endorsed by seven former Los Altos mayors, the League of Conservation Voters, the Los Altos Chamber of Commerce Supervisor, Semidion, and many others. And I am proud of those endorsements because they also recognize that I have the right experience that the city council needs going forward. I respectfully ask for your vote. As I said at the beginning, I would be honored to serve Los Altos. Thank you for coming, and good night.
Thank you. Jeannie?
So, my goals in terms of going forward are four things. One is how do we preserve Los Altos' character while balancing the need for growth and the growth that happens around us? Second, how do we get, have our sound fiscal practices in place with, and deep community engagement and civic integrity? Third, we need to do a better job of some long-range planning. This is a hot button for me. I think if we have the long-range planning, we can align our financial resources with our operational needs, our capital improvements, as well as our strategic initiatives. It will also cause us to reduce that temptation to always start over again every time the council changes. And I know I was one of those in 2012. And the fourth thing is to continue to work on addressing our regional issues. These regional issues impact Los Altos. We do not operate in a bubble. I would like to remind everybody that serving on, on council is not about moving our own individual agendas or that of any one group. Leadership is about building collective strength and working with and through others. It's about creating an environment where we can meet the needs of generations in a harmonious way. We need to listen to all voices, from the loud ones to the whisperers, from organized groups to individuals. So, oftentimes, I remind you that the best answers are solutions that are not the ones we started with, but instead are the ones born out of working collaboratively and respectively with one another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for the League for hosting this forum. I want to say that I am qualified to serve as your council member because I have a proven track record. I will establish resident-focused priorities, plans, and resources with achievable goals and accountability to ensure residents get what they deserve and expect. In 11 years on the Parks Commission, we modernized playground equipment, provided internet access to recreational facilities, launched the first senior commission, and developed the Parks Master Plan. I established the Grant Park Senior Center, started a Mandarin immersion program in the Cupertino Union School District. I served two terms on the Santa Clara Civil Grand Jury, affecting change in fiscal responsibility, transparency, and local governance. I chaired the League of Women Voters Education Committee. I was honored as an Asian-American Hero by the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors, and I'm currently a Neighborhood Watch Captain and Block Action Team Leader. I am asking for your vote so that we can get things done. Thank you all.
Thank you. This concludes our forum. I'd like to thank the candidates for participating. I'd also like to thank all the volunteers that made this possible, our card sorters, our timers, the people that were picking up the cards. And also, I'd like to thank the audience. You guys had some really good questions tonight. This forum has been designed to impart information to you, the voters, in accordance with our belief that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We hope that the insights that you've gained from this forum will aid you in making your decision. If you want more voter information, please visit the Voters Edge website at votersedge.org. The recording of this forum will be posted both on KMTV and on Voters Edge. The last day to register to vote or update your registration is October 24th. We have knowledgeable people here who can assist you if you need to update or register to vote. You can cast your ballot beginning November 11th through 8 o'clock on election, election night, November 8th. You have until November 1st. October 11th?
November 11th.
Oh, yeah, whatever, yeah. That was early, guys. You, okay, you can cast your ballot beginning October 11th, which is the vote-by-mail ballot, all the way until 8 o'clock on election night, November 8th. You can request your vote-by-mail ballot through November 1st. There are other forums in which you may be interested. On October 6th, there's a forum for the Los Altos School District from 7:30 to 8:30 at the library next door. Also, as you know, there are 17 statewide propositions on the ballot and a number of local measures. So, you may also want to attend one of our pros and cons presentations on state and local ballot measures. We have two scheduled, one on October 16th, one on the 24th, and some other leagues have them scheduled, too. There's a flyer in the front, a multicolored flyer that gives you the times and dates and locations of the upcoming forums. We also invite you to join the League. We have information on the table if you're interested in joining. Please vote on November 8th and help make our democracy work. Thank you. [applause]
Many, many of you guys had comments in there about housing and about transportation, and I would encourage you to go and listen to some of the League presentations. Measure A and Measure B address both of those subjects, so I would encourage you to look into those.
Oh, my God. Nancy, magnificent job. Great job, Alex. Jeannie, I think you've done this before. I think you've done this before.